...the week for Western Washington tonight. Lo...
Three more weeks?
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our October 16th, 2017 Moscow Council Meeting. With that, I would like to introduce, we've got the Boy Scouts here with us, Boy Scout Troop Number 344, with their leader Alex Gregg, and I'd like to have Alex and the whole troop to come up front here and lead us in the pledge. And when they start leading us, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like everybody to please stand, but we'll give these young men, they're here earning badges of merit today, and so this is a big deal for us.
Pretty active. Look at the number of badges those kids get. Wow. This is a pretty active troop.
Okay, everybody rise.
..............................................................................
I've got to share with everybody, at one time I was a Boy Scout, and it was well over 50 years ago, so, but one of the things I like about Scouts is they go out and they do a lot of good work in communities, and they earn a lot of respect, and it's a good way for young men to learn responsibility about what they need to be to be a young man and grow up to be a man. So, I am personally very fond of the Boy Scouts, as being a former one from many, many years ago.
And women now.
And women. That's right. Okay, we will move on to the next item, which is going to be Family Promise Week Proclamation I am going to read. Whereas the city of Moscow has dedicated to assisting agencies whenever possible, including past endeavors such as the Poverty on the Palouse Group, which assisted in bringing partners together, leading to Family Promise joining the Palouse. And whereas proceeds from the 2017 Mayor's Golf Tournament were dedicated to Family Promise of the Palouse in support of their efforts and assistance provided to families on the Palouse. And whereas, in October 2013, Family Promise of the Palouse began operations dedicated to helping the most vulnerable among us, children and families who are temporarily homeless. And whereas, Family Promise supports numerous congregations of our area's faith community, which provides the facilities to house and feed guest families, thereby making a real difference in the lives of their neighbors in need. And whereas, believing in every child deserves a home, Family Promise of the Palouse and its more than 400 volunteer and power families in making their transition from homelessness to sustainable independence. And whereas, over the past four years, Family Promise of the Palouse has graduated more than 45 families into secure and affordable housing with a success rate of 80 percent. Now therefore, I, Bill Lambert, the mayor of the city of Moscow, Idaho, do hereby proclaim the week of October 22nd through 2018, 2017, to be Family Promise Week in Moscow. In doing so, I urge all citizens to recognize and raise awareness of the issue of homeless children and the families in our community. And with that, I have Mary Beth and Monty Walker here that I would love to present this proclamation.
(inaudible) Thank you very much, and thank you for your donation with the golf tournament. That was great. And it's a great privilege to see the community of Pullman and Moscow pull together to go ahead and provide shelter for those homeless families. It's, when you see those families come in and see they're not knowing exactly what to expect, and a little bit afraid, and to see the community of Moscow gather around them and help teach them how to parent, how to budget, how to learn how to apply for a job and various things, and see the progress that they have, it's a great, touching thing to behold. And it's just been amazing how many people have gathered around, and I need to compliment the Scouts. I saw that, his last name is Martin, I don't know what scout troop he's in, but his Eagle Project is to go ahead and gather various things that people need when they graduate from the program, meaning once they are able to go to their own apartments, they sometimes don't have the essentials for daily living. And his Eagle Project is having the community donate that. So, Boy Scouts are involved also in this. So, we really appreciate all you've done.
Thank you, Mayor Lambert and council for this recognition. And I just wanted to say that our fearless leader, Bruce Pittman, the president of our board, and Katie Carlson, who is the executive director, along with Kathy Pittman, who is...
Keeps Bruce on track.
Yeah. Without whom, a lot of this wouldn't work. They are in Washington DC right now at a conference for the National Family Promise. And many people don't realize that Family Promise is a nationwide organization that's been going for some 40-odd years. And we were privileged to welcome the founder of Family Promise here earlier this spring. And Katie Carlson will be addressing the whole group because of the success and the partnership that is going on in this community. So, you all who have helped to make it possible for us should feel extremely proud of the work that you do, both in the civic context and within your communities of faith. So, thank you very much.
With that being said, Family Promise of the Palouse, and we did have a tournament, it was a fun tournament, we had a lot of people involved, 80 people that played in that tournament, a whole bunch of volunteers for it, and so it was a very fun day. But you can turn something into, the Family Promise is a very, very serious organization on what they do, and, but there's no reason not to be able to have a little fun with while you're doing that. And so, to me, it was just a pleasure to be able to do that, and those are the types of things that we need to continue in our community. And this community is blessed with great volunteers and good people that will stand up and do that. So, yes, I have a very soft spot for that, and I'll move on to the next thing. I will make an announcement here, we, there will be no executive session this evening on the back end of things, and so we'll go from there. And the next thing will be the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Okay, we got a motion by John and a second by Jim to approve the consent agenda as it is stated. I'll start the roll with Walter.
Aye.
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 Okay. Six-four is okay. We will move on to item number two, staff recognition report. Jim, do we have anything?
We don't have a report this evening, thank you.
Okay. Mayor's appointments, I have none this evening. So, we will move on. Item number four, public comment and response period limits to 15 minutes, and what we do is as long as there is something not in front of the Board of Adjustment and/or Planning and Zoning or on this evening's agenda, you are welcome to get up and state your name and tell us who you are and where you live, and we will give you three minutes. So, please come forward.
Joanne Manita, 203 South Howard in Moscow. I feel it's important to say something about Moscow on the move. Les McDonald's very excellent presentation at the last meeting, I felt gave the impression that there was a lot of community participation, outreach, input into the decisions that we are now living with or about to live with concerning the bridge on Third Street. And I didn't feel that happened at all. I went to one of the advertised meetings downtown, a small group of people in a restaurant were discussing bicycle access to downtown. And so, I asked if there was going to be a discussion about Third Street, and for the public, nobody knew anything about that. Next thing I know, we're having an open house here in this room. I came, there were easels all around with maps on them, and lo and behold, the first one I went to had a motor, motor bridge over Third Street. And I said to the consultant standing in front of it that I was surprised, because last thing I heard, city council had voted against that in a resolution. And he said, "Well, the city wants it, and, but you can put a sticky note on here with your opinion, or you could fill out a three-by-five card." So, I see in the, in the motor MM plan that there were nine sticky notes put on there, eight of them were for a pedestrian bridge, one for a motor bridge. I filled out a card, it didn't say how many cards were filled out. But my point is, that is not out, input, that is not outreach. Sticky notes are not what it's all about, once the decision has been made. And that's appropriate now, because the Transportation Commission's going to work on a plan for traffic calming, and they're going to have the plan and then give it, they didn't have a plan for outreach. And I just hope it's not going to be sticky notes again, because that ain't it, kid. And I recall in all this, when the ball fields were being discussed, and the plan, city's plan was to put them out on West Palouse River Drive, and the neighbors, in the neighborhood were upset because there would be loud noise and lighting. Other people were upset because it would be right adjacent to the arboretum, which is very precious. Other people were upset because how are the kids going to be able to bike or walk all that way? And there was a community discussion, there was a big meeting at the middle school, it was full, we all expressed our opinion, a committee was formed with stakeholders and different opinions, and in the long run, a better decision was made, a decision to have a Joseph, Joseph Street Fields, and everybody felt better about it. And I think this is an example of the way I like to see our city council and city work, to actually listen to the people and have their input and try to work out better plans. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne.
I'm Becker Gooch, 234 South Roosevelt in Moscow, Idaho, and I just thank you for this time that I can speak to you. I did send you an extended version of some of the research that we've been doing and just observing with traffic on, on Third Street. I really was taken by a conference that I went to, a speaker, Peter Koontz, who was at the Mike Kite Distinguished Lecture Series, and he gave a very important hierarchy of streets and how you plan. And you start with pedestrians, then bicycles, public transit, commercial vehicles, high occupancy vehicles, and the last is single occupancy vehicles. And we seem to be planning backwards, we seem to be planning for cars, and then putting in whatever else needs to be done for pedestrians, bikers, and the like. And we're really concerned about the traffic that is on Third Street, and the safety for high school students, and for Lena Whitmore students, for the, in our community. Les McDonald had shared this last week, at the meeting, that the projection in 2035, which is 17 years from now, with the full bridge, the increase in traffic will only be 96 vehicles. And that is really hard for me to get my head around, that 96 vehicles more will be on Third Street with a bridge in 17 years. It just doesn't compute. And if there's traffic calming, according to his model, it's 704 cars less. That doesn't compute either. I am just really wondering if these are really accurate, and if that, if they are accurate, why do we need a, a traffic bridge in the first place? Why is it needed? We, I just can't see where we need to spend a half a million dollars on a bridge that obviously is not going to enhance traffic or increase traffic. I would like to see us really reconsider $75,000 for a pedestrian bridge, and take that other half million dollars and put it somewhere else in the community where we have such a dire need for our infrastructure. And Third Street is really suffering today. I don't know if you have been aware that the new section that was built less than a year ago in front of East City Park is now rutted with heavy traffic and with heavy trucks. There is constant heavy trucks using this, this road. If there's a bridge, that will increase. There's just no way of getting around that. We did do an observation at the high school on, on traffic and pedestrians. And the morning of the 10th of October, or 9th of October, excuse me, I counted the traffic eastbound and westbound. In one hour, in front of the high school, there were 169 cars going east, 419 going west. That's a total of 688 vehicles in an hour, and that did include trucks as well. Of those 688 vehicles, seven cars slowed down to 15 miles an hour. The rest that slowed were slowed because somebody was in the crosswalk or because traffic was slowed, but seven cars took it upon themselves to slow to 15 miles an hour. That is a terrible percentage, and it is a risk factor. I saw cars speeding into the parking lanes, I saw them in the bike lanes, I saw them going around pedestrians on the opposite side of the road so they didn't have to stop for them. And I think we're just going to experience an accident that's just waiting to happen here. And I don't think that's going to improve, and, and I do think that more traffic is going to cause more harm. There are more bikers, walkers, and handicapped community members who use Third Street as their east-west access. And it is the only part of town that is level enough for bikers, pedestrians...
Becker, could you wrap it up, please?
Yes, I will. I will do that. I have heard it said that because we're speaking out against this, we are considered whiners, we are considered nimby's, we are considered subfashioned whiners. And that's not the case. People who are nimby's, whiners, and complainers do it for their own good, not for the community good. And we are speaking out for the community good, not just our own good. Thank you.
Thank you.
David Hall, 1334 Wallen Road. Installing a multimodal bridge over Paradise Creek would be uniquely disastrous for Third Street residents and bicycle riders. This Third Street is a direct extension of the Pullman Highway from the west to Main Street. Currently, traffic bound to the east from Main Street is nicely diffused, primarily among DB and Sixth Streets and Highway Eight. With such a bridge, Third Street, one of our best routes for bicycling through town, and a route adjacent to parks, schools, and such, would get hammered. Moscow should follow its 2007 pedestrian bridge resolution, which endorses the construction of a pedestrian bicycle disabled access bridge on Third Street over Paradise Creek, and reserve the half a million dollars. Some recent research showed there is more in the budget for other uses. Follow-on, I guess, that money, the half million dollars in the general fund for our critical supplemental drinking water. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
David, can I have that, please? I need one for the record.
We all have one up here.
Give us an extra one.
I'll give it to you.
That's fine. Thank you.
Okay, with that, nobody else coming up, we're going to move on to item number five, which is Water Conservation Report by Nicole Baker and Tyler Palmer. Tyler, you get the podium first, sir.
I'm going to go first, because Nicole's going to tell you all the important stuff. All right, I am really, really excited to be here. This is a report that we've been chomping at the bit to give for several years now. We've, we worked really hard to get our conservation plan that the council approved up and running. We were charged with finding a good, smooth way to implement it, and I can take almost no credit for how smooth that's gone, but it has gone amazingly, amazingly well. We've got a wonderful staff in our Environmental Services Group, and Nicole Baker's just been instrumental, not only in drafting this plan, but in figuring out how to implement the plan, doing the outreach, and really just can't give her enough credit through this process. I think the thing that I love the most about this report and water conservation is that often, I think the thing I like about local government is that it's, it's, we're forced to be so practical. We face real problems that we have to solve, and there's no politically ideological way to deliver water, we just have to deliver water. And it's, it's a resource, and it's the most basic, fundamental element that we need to survive as a species. The reason that Moscow sits where Moscow sits is because of the availability of fresh water. The reason that every civilization in the history of mankind sits where it sits is because of the availability of fresh water. And that's, to me, that's, that's really neat, to have such large and basic problems that we get to try and solve, and that we get to come together as a community, which really, you know, local government, that's all it is, is just people coming together and working toward a common good. And we get to try and, and work on this. And our water conservation plan really provides people with the tools, as residents, to help with this problem. And a lot of problems, we, I think that we get overwhelmed with problems that we see in the world that seem just too big for all of us, and we don't know where we can have an impact. And I, this is, I think what we'll show in this report, is that every resident of this city can have a big impact, and that with the tools that the city has provided through this conservation plan, it can be really easy to have that impact, and it can be easy to see that impact. And so, this is something that we're, we're really excited about. I'm going to let Nicole take the reins and walk through some of the successes that we've had with this program, and then we're going to give you a really exciting update about our Y-Scape Garden here at City Hall. And so, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Nicole and let her give you the details.
Welcome, Nicole.
Thank you, Tyler. Thank you, Mayor, council. I appreciate being here this evening. I really do like talking about the conservation efforts from not only our leaders supporting that, but our community. It does take a lot of people coming together to make a big difference, and even from one household, they can make such a difference. But you combine all that together, we can really reduce that pressure on our declining aquifer. So, I'm going to remind our residents of the fixture rebate program that we have available to them. Several residents have already taken advantage of this great opportunity. So, tonight, I want to remind everybody that this is available to all of our water customers. So, if you have a toilet that is a high water use toilet, and it's time to upgrade, we will help you with this at the city and give you a rebate incentive to do that. There's different levels of rebate incentives based on what you are taking out and what you're replacing it with. The example I have here is an example from a rebate that was submitted, and you can see this old, clunky toilet, doesn't even look good. So, whether you're updating your home or just wanting to switch out your old fixtures, this is a great opportunity for you. This one is from 1956, so, you know, best guess, five gallons per flush, probably more, to be honest with you. And they replaced it with a high-efficiency toilet. So, this one household with one toilet is saving 16,000 gallons annually of water. So, that's a significant amount of savings for just one household. So, imagine if several households are doing that. We do accept, we make it easy for you, we accept do-it-yourself applications, installations, as well as professional. The rebate process is pretty seamless, we have an application form, and within two, two weeks usually, you get your rebate check. Now, looking at the citywide success of this program, you can see our participation has increased significantly from when this program was implemented in 2016 versus this fiscal year. Now, implementation started about May of 2016, so we don't have a complete fiscal year. But even considering that, we still have an increase in not only fixture participation, but also for the households that are a part of our problem-solving with decreasing this need on our declining aquifer. As you can see, the combined efforts for our water savings is 1.4 million gallons for both fiscal years combined. Now, that is a savings we're going to see 10 years from now. So, this conservation plan that Tyler mentioned, it is a 10-year plan. So, we are always going to see that water savings. For the city, the total cost combined for both fiscal, fiscal years is a little over $17,000. If we want to look at that in thousand gallons saved, that is $1.59 is the cost per thousand gallons saved. Now, we want to compare that with a conservation plan projected costs, we're well within that budget range. Now, I do need to mention that the cost is even better than what that $1.59 is. If we consider that we're not pumping that water to treat it and send it out into our lines, and then on the other side, we are not treating that effluent water, we're saving an additional 79 cents per thousand gallons saved for that cost of being 80 cents. And we did want to compare and let our customers know, what are they paying for that thousand gallons for water coming through their home? And that's at tier one, $3.10. Now, I have it at tier one, because typically, our households in Moscow, they're within that first tier for indoor, indoor water use. Now, on to one of my more favorite things to talk about at work, is my, the Y-Scape Program. Now, the city has been involved in supporting the Y-Scape Program since 2008, starting with the Mayor's Y-Scape Award, which we'll be here in a couple months to talk about that. But in addition to that, we have demonstration gardens that Tyler will discuss later, and we have now this rebate program. So, if you have 300 square feet or more of irrigated turf, and you want to convert that to a Y-Scape, the city has $150 rebate that they'll get back to you. It's a simple process, as far as you get ahold of me, I come in to a pre-site and a post, post-site inspection. Now, looking at, a lot of people say, "Well, gosh, I'm overwhelmed by this, I might not be ready to make this full conversion." Well, I often say, "Start with your front lawn." You know, we understand that green spaces are necessary, so start with the front lawn, because typically, people don't barbecue in the front lawn, or have their dogs out there, or, you know, throw the ball with their kid. So, start there. Or even better yet, you could start on one of these tree, tree planting strips. So, the, you have this strip of grass that's hard to, if you think about it, how are you going to water that efficiently? Because you're going to end up watering the impervious surface, which is against city code anyway, so start there as well. So, if you look at 1,200 square feet, you can easily save 9,300 gallons, and that is on a very conservative level. That's assuming that you're watering your grass efficiently. And the Y-Scape, you know, according to the calculations from the Water Department, Y-Scape, it uses a third of the water, and in a lot of cases, it's better than that. So, one household can make a big difference. Now, taking a look at the program citywide, we have an increase of participation from the implementation year to this year, and that is really good news, because when I talk to Y-Scape-ers, whether it be for the Mayor's Y-Scape Award, or a pre- and post-site inspection, I ask them, "How did you hear about this program?" And they said, "Well, my neighbor's doing it, and it looked really nice." And so, the more people that are participating, the more this, this will spread, these ideas will spread, that this does look good, it does use less water, it does use less resources. And the cost to the city for this program thus far is a little over $3,400, cost per thousand gallons saved, is $1.46, and comparing that with, excuse me, comparing that with the water conservation plan, is significantly less. Now, I do want to add that this is a direct correlation with how many feet are converted to Y-Scape, so that, that cost will vary from year to year. And right now, we do have 28 rebates pending. So, that means we did, we have done a pre-site inspection, and in the spring, we'll do some follow-up and see how, how they're coming along with their new Y-Scape. Again, with the additional costs, if we consider that we're not pumping that water that people are putting out on their lawn, because they don't have their lawn anymore, then we're looking at $1.10 per thousand gallons saved. And I do show the different tiered rates for that thousand gallons that a customer has when they're paying for their water. So, tier one is at $3.10, and then, as you can see, tier three is pretty high. But tier three is over 2,000 cubic feet, and so that essentially is that customer that does have a big green lawn, and they're keeping that green, big green lawn green. So, you can see the difference in cost as well. And we are happy to announce that the Y-Scape Guidebook is available. It's available at the Water Office, it's available online. The city of Pullman also has it available. This was a collaborative effort, we came together, and we created this book to help and support our, our customers and our residents to make this Y-Scape conversion. We want to remind people that this is a free booklet to them, and as well as hopefully that can inspire them in addition to the $150 rebate. So, and I have a few here tonight, if anybody's interested. With that Y-Scape thought, I'm going to let Tyler take over.
Nicole, do you know, off the top of your head, what the, what's the average cubic feet used on indoor for... on indoor for indoor use per household?
580.
580 is the average?
Yes, yeah.
I'm really glad you asked Nicole that, Jim, because there wasn't a chance I was going to be able to answer like that.
Is that per a month?
Tyler, is that per a month?
Did you make that up on the spot? Because I've heard 85% of all statistics are made up on the spot.
What is it that they say? There's lies, something lies, statistics? Not from us, you get the straight truth. So, yeah, so we want to talk now, you know, Nicole, I think those numbers are so encouraging and I love that about Moscow, especially the more people find out about this, the more inclined they are to participate. They want to participate. Nicole and her staff have done a wonderful job making this easy to do. It really is a simple, simple process. And we're not stopping here. We don't consider our conservation plan a dead document. It's living. It's a dynamic document. And we're always coming up with new ways that we want to do our outreach. We have a lot of really cool plans in the pipeline that we're trying to work through that we'll be bringing some of them back to council just to continue to enhance our outreach and make it easier and easier to do this. So we really do appreciate all the participation. So I want to talk about one case study that we set up that's very visible here at City Hall. Everybody's seen the Wyscape conversion from this area here that was just impossible to keep grass grown in and there was grass kind of behind to this, the beautiful Wyscape that Nicole designed and that we installed last year. We really appreciated the support from administration and from our electeds on this project. You know, it's funny, it's a change. It's iconoclastic. People are used to seeing green grass in public places, in certain public places. And so for some people, it was, well, shouldn't City Hall have green grass? And that was a question to answer. You know, there is something about, there's a nostalgia attached to that because people are used to it. But I think that what we ended up with was something really beautiful. But one of the things we really wanted to do with the City Hall Wyscape was truly set it up as an example so that we could run a good comparison and get good side-by-side numbers on what the inputs are, not just water, but also what are the inputs that you maybe don't consider? The fertilizer, the lawnmower, the gas and lawnmower, the labor time, all of these things that sometimes we don't think about, those inputs that maybe are costing us time, which ultimately is probably one of our most valuable resources and costing us, we're emitting more greenhouse gases. So we wanted to look comprehensively and we set this Wyscape up to do that. We have it metered separately so that we're able to very accurately account for the water that goes to each side. And then we, in cooperation with our Parks Department, who really I just can't say enough about how wonderful they've been, this is something that's new for them too. You know, they know how to maintain green grass. And they're stretched thin. You know, we get a lot done with not a lot of employees in this city and they really work hard to keep up on a lot of acreage and we're sensitive to that. And so this was something new for them and they really were very helpful. They got on board, they lent us their expertise, they've been wonderful to work with. So through that process, they cooperated with us in tracking the inputs that went into the grass section so that we could then compare those to the Wyscape section. And so that's what I'm going to go through with you right now is just some of these numbers because they're really surprising. You know, why Wyscape? Why go to this effort? Just minimal water needs, obviously the Wyscape uses far less water and we'll discuss exactly how much less, less labor, low to no chemical use and the reduced greenhouse gases. And we'll talk some specifics here. What we did is we took, for an accurate comparison, we took the entire input for the grass portion of City Hall and then we reduced that down to the equivalent square footage that was put into Wyscape. So there's 1,430 square feet of Wyscape right now at City Hall. That's the first phase of our Wyscape. We do plan to continue with additional phases of Wyscaping at City Hall, but that first phase was 1,430 square feet. And so we use an equivalent numbers from the lawn. So right here, you can see in the gallons of water use, these are actual numbers, these aren't projected, these are actual numbers, the number of the gallons of water use. You can see the traditional lawn. And the assumption in here is actually efficient watering of that lawn. Our Parks Department has to water this by hand. They're out there moving sprinklers around. Sometimes that can be less than efficient. But this assumes efficient watering of that lawn and you can see how significant that is. And the thing that we want to point out with this slide is generally a Wyscape uses far more water in the first year and second year, but especially the first year as it's established. And so we were actually surprised by this number. We thought that the number would be higher, but it just performed exceptionally well and it looks just gorgeous out there. And so our water uses, you can see significantly less, a fourth of the water. And then looking at the greenhouse gas emissions from the Wyscape, you can see that we had about 157 pounds for the traditional lawn and 30 pounds for the Wyscape. You're not mowing it. You're not out, you know, running the edger or the weed whacker or those types of things that will produce this. And it's not even just those expenses, but when you look at, since I've got to mow this and I've got to transport the mower to the site and I've got to, you know, we've got to drive it, it takes a bigger vehicle, we've got to bring the fertilizer out here, we've got to spray it. So there's a lot of those inputs that don't have to happen on the Wyscape side. This is something that we wanted to track as well is just the labor hours. What type of hours go into this Wyscape? As you, the Wyscape out there is, there's a lot of variety out there and it's beautifully maintained. I mean, I don't think I've seen it with any trash in it. We keep an eye on it, we keep it trimmed, keep it clean. And here's the labor comparison. 46.5 hours that our Parks Department spent putting fertilizer on it, mowing it, and watering it, and we had seven and a half hours on the Wyscape. And that actually includes the time that was spent this week. From the time that we gave the presentation to the Public Works Finance Committee to this week, we had some time in doing the maintenance and we anticipated that time and included it in this number. And so that really is a real input. So, yeah, you just, you look at the hours comparison and again, it's just, it's not even comparable. And so the thing that we really came away with was there's not a good argument for not doing this where it's appropriate. It's financially responsible, it's ecologically responsible, we're being responsible with resources comprehensively and it's less time consuming. And so it just, it makes sense all the way around the board and it's beautiful. You know, and I guess when I think about it, I think about if I had two cars that I really liked, I may like one a lot more, but if it's completely outside my budget, then I'm going to go with the other one that I like. And in my case, I think the Wyscape is more aesthetically pleasing. I prefer it. As I said, I don't want to throw a ball with my kids. So there's a need, there's a space for that. But I think that really as a city, we need to consider the inputs that go into this and what's the more responsible choice for our landscaping. Some of the other things that really I don't think a lot of people consider upfront is the urban wildlife that it attracts. I'll tell you, I love it. Every morning when I walk into the water building over here on A and Main, we have that established Wyscape garden there. There are birds and there are squirrels and the birds sit right in the little bush that's right by the door and you just walk by and they just flit around and it just, it makes me happy. It makes me feel good to be in an area, especially in an urban area, right in the middle of a downtown where there's still wildlife, there's habitat for the wildlife. And so it's really neat to see that. These pictures are taken, right here, the quail, that's right outside our water building. And so you get year-round color, you get the diversity and attracts pollinators also, which is also a big deal right now. You know, we've had several presentations on pollinators given and the critical nature of pollinators in our community. And so it gives them something to eat. So these are, those are just some of the reasons for the Wyscape. We've come up with, as Nicole mentioned, the Wyscape Guidebook, which was a wonderful effort, really the first time we've collaborated with the City of Pullman on something of that scale. Mayor Lambert will be presenting that with Mayor Johnson from Pullman at the Water Summit, which we are super, super excited about. We were before the council, oh, a few weeks ago, talking about our water alternative study. Just nothing more critical than we could be talking about at this time. And so we hope everyone will come out to this. It's a free event at Switzer Event Center. It's this Thursday, starts at 4:30. Just a wonderful event. Great speaker lined up and it'll be, it'll be a lot of fun. And with that, we take any questions you might have.
Tyler, and Nicole, thank you, Nicole, for that presentation on Wyscapes. And I look forward to the presentation we'll have in the following month on the winners that we have from it. And I can tell you, we've got, I can't tell you how many houses in Moscow that have Wyscaping, but there is a tremendous amount. I think it'd be kind of interesting to have a count really because there is a lot of people doing the right thing by this. And you talk about the October 19th Water Summit and Water Alternatives, and I think that's exactly where we need to move. We've talked about this for a long, long time. It's time for us to move forward with it. Questions for Tyler or Nicole?
Well, I'd just like to say, point out that all those plants out in the Wyscape have little identifying plates on them, so anybody that's considering that can see how they look in their yard and it's a great way to plan your own Wyscape and pick out plants because they are labeled out there.
And we're so happy, Nicole is a resident expert. She spends a lot of time just consulting with people. They have questions, they want to know specifics and we love doing that. We love helping people out any way we can.
And not only is Nicole an expert on, but we've got a lot of residents. If you spot one that you like in a certain yard, you can go up and talk to them and they're very proud to talk to you about how it works for them, how to do it, and it's a pretty exciting thing.
If you do the math just on the lawn rebate portion with the over 9,000 gallons per year that a single residence can save, if you extrapolate that out of the number of residents that we have in the city, it's over 55 million gallons annually that we could save. And that's just with that one little bit that you do, that tiny percentage of the lawn, if everybody just did that much, it would be that. So it really adds up when you look at everybody coming together and having a cumulative impact.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to thank Nicole. I'm a teacher and so I was going to encourage the Boy Scouts. You can go and get rain catchers down at the water building. There's two types, there's a square and there's a circular one. And there's all the showerheads and all the things that you can change out on your faucets and there's timers for your shower so you can take a five-minute shower. So there's a lot of things that you all, and you can take those into your school and stuff too. Nicole, give them to take and start distributing it because by you talking about it, you get more people conserving and that's the goal of what we're doing.
One of the really, really big things we're excited about that's upcoming is we're working on a household audit program to have a simple process by which people can do an audit on their own household and then they can get in touch with us and get all of the devices that'd be applicable to their house. And so we're working out the specifics on that, but we really hope to have a big impact with that.
That sounds great.
I have to give a plug for the Water Wise Guide. I love that document. It not only, like Bill was saying, it gives examples of the Water Wise Plants, but it's kind of also between now and when we get to actually do something in our yard again, it's a nice dreaming document. You can pick out the ones you like, put a little star and plan and plan. So I like the collaboration, but it is a really, really useful guide as well.
Yeah, my wife has spent a lot of time with it over the last couple of weeks making plans for next spring.
That should put you to work then, Tyler, right? Walter?
Two things about the Water Summit. They're giving away a free...
McCoy has donated a free low-flow toilet. And we also have $1,000 that was donated for a Wyscape makeover.
And there's food and drink available there so you won't miss supper.
Thank you very much, Tyler and Nicole, for the wonderful presentation.
Tyler, when was that summit again, please?
The 19th.
Thursday, this Thursday at 4:30 at Switzer.
I will say it again at the end of the reports, Walter. You may want to say it again as well.
Thank you.
With that, ladies and gentlemen, that's the end of our meeting. However, we are going to go into reports and I'm going to start with Jim.
Okay, we had Public Works Finance, pretty much everything was on the agenda that we talked about already. The other meetings that I've attended in the last week were the Moscow Arts Commission. And the crux of that is that there's been six submissions for the new public art at the library. There were, previously there were five and they opened it up to more states and we had at least one from Utah this time. So I haven't seen those yet, they haven't been open, but there's going to be some sort of a presentation on those new submissions and we'll be selecting art for the library in the near future. And also the Arts Commission is working on strategic planning. Jan Pifner over there is working on that, trying to get them lined up so they can prioritize the projects that the Arts Commission is going to work on over the next little bit because it's kind of a project-based commission. And other than that, I went to the Palouse Knowledge Corridor this last week and the crux of that is that the Be the Entrepreneur Boot Camp, which has been going on for the last five years, will be held next June 11 through 14. So if you want to start a business and you want to get some really good instruction on how to do that, that's the thing you want to sign up for. And also, we talked about that Entrepreneur Week is this month, November 4 through 11. So if you're an entrepreneur and you want to get recognized, you should talk to somebody from PKC and they'll get you out front on that. Gina may have some further, something to add about the PKC. She was at that, so.
Well, she'll wait till we get to her and we'll go with Art. Yeah, it's the season where everybody does turgid bureaucratic things. So this last time at the Urban Renewal Agency, we went through a whole slug of policy-making decisions, strategic planning decisions, adoption of bylaws and other equally thrilling items and got those in place for the next year. The Clearwater RC in DC had an annual meeting down in, of all places, Osaka and went through much the same, passed a budget, did some allocations and some rejiggering of the emphasis there and got that out of the way. Upcoming is a CEDA meeting where I'm sure we'll be resonating with equal thrills in setting up the administration.
How'd the Youth Conservation Corps turn out this year?
They had a bit of a scramble. People came and went a couple of times over, but they finally got a solid group established and it went off very well.
Walter, the only place I know to hold a meeting in Osaka is at a bar, but that's okay. I'm still trying to get past turgid. On October the 3rd, Art and the mayor and I attended a WHAMMY reception at the third floor of the new Gritman Medical Office Building. Really thrilling to be there with 80 hopeful new doctors in their white coats. Really exciting to see the increase in the number of WHAMMY students in the Idaho program. On the 11th, I went to Boise and Les and I both went to the Association of Idaho City's Water Reuse Task Force Organization meeting. It was attended by about a total of two dozen people. Half a dozen of them were from DEQ that went over the rules and statutes that they have regarding reuse of wastewater. Talked about some case studies, some land application guidance. It was pretty much an educational day, helping people all get on the same page and understand what it is we're talking about. Our next meeting will be January the 22nd at the AIC meeting in Boise. So then I, on the 12th of October, attended and helped pass out five Orchid Awards to people that have done historical renovations with their businesses or their homes. It was quite educational, again, to sit there and have them explain the project and show slides from what it looked like before they started and what it looks like when they got through. That's all I've got.
Very good, Walter. Catherine?
As fire department liaison, I went and met over in the fire station, Station Number One, and they had new volunteers for the fire department and for the ambulance company. And then they always do a training when all the residents and all the volunteers are there. And it was an ambulance training on how you move people with a back brace and the hierarchy of all that safety and stuff. So our volunteer fire department and ambulance corps really do a lot to stay connected. Also, if you're interested, they have a Facebook page, so you can check out their Facebook page. And I think that we're thinking about linking things so you can get more information about that. That was really good. And then I, as the liaison to the Transportation Commission, Les did a long presentation to educate everybody about what traffic calming devices mean. And I think that the next meeting, when there's a plan in place, I think that outreach that you all are wanting is what that second meeting is. So I think the part of making sure everybody understands what traffic calming devices were was the reason for that meeting. So I think the next one will be as interesting.
Gina? Okay, on the 10th, I attended the Pathways Commission. And aside from the turgid bureaucracy of that meeting, look at that, huh? We had a very cool presentation by Dwight Curtis from our Parks and Rec Department, like Tyler was saying, about the potential for an edible forest in Moscow. I thought that was really cool and I was hungry too, so it helped. But we're looking at some potential for that. Really a neat project, really a neat project. Again, one of those that we have to sit reading our books for a little while until it's time to plant again. I did sat right next to Jim, actually, at the PKC meeting. And I think we learned that the best laid plans of mice and men can be waylaid very easily in that surveys and emails don't always get opened. And so in their effort to measure the effectiveness of the Be the Entrepreneur Boot Camp, they ended up with a very small, very small sample set of actually people responding to the survey. So we're going back, we're doing a little personal phone calling and that sort of thing, encouragement to get people to do that. And I'm not going to say anything about the Water Summit on Thursday from 4:30 to 8:00 at the SCL Event Center.
John?
Will?
John?
Well, in case you don't know it, I've been sick. And, uh...
You look good now, John.
Well, thank you. And so I've been kind of, uh, between Gritman and Good Sam for the last two weeks, and therefore I have nothing to report, other than the fact that I'm real glad I'm here.
Okay, well, uh, as Walter had mentioned earlier, on October third, we, uh, him and Art, as well as myself, were at Gritman for the WHAMMY program. And then we got forty first-year resident students, doctors, and forty second-year residents. And man, I got a chance to talk to not every single one of them, but a bunch of them. And that's exciting, 'cause those are kids that are from here in Idaho. Half of them from the Boise area. And that's good for Idaho, not only for the city of Moscow, but rural Idaho too, because we need lots of doctors in this state. And so that's really gratifying. And I think it's a big thing for our town, the University of Idaho, and working together with Gritman. And with that collaborative effort, that's a big deal for all of us. October thirteenth, we had a block party on Friday the thirteenth, and it was chilly. For those of us that were down there, I was there for like three and a half hours, and I really had to hand it to the people playing in the bands, because I don't know how their fingers could have possibly did it. But I kept walking back and forth, and back and forth, and back and forth. And, uh, so it was one of those nights. But we originally had it September eighth, and 'cause of the smoke and the quality of the air, we couldn't do it then. It was about seventy-five degrees, which would've been terrific. And Friday night, it was like thirty-five degrees. But we lived through it, and we will do it again. We're not ever gonna give up. Ladies and gentlemen, we will move forward and have some fun with it. And I wanna mention, I know that nobody up here talked about the Water Summit on October nineteenth at Switzer Engineering from four-thirty on, but please come, because you know what, ladies and gentlemen, we need to get an alternative water source, and that's what we're working for. And that's a big push for me, because I think it's a big deal.
I have one more announcement. Believe it or not, on October nineteenth, the library is doing a presentation on their renovation. And they put that invitation out in the summer, which I accepted. So that's where I'll be, knowing that the information coming from the Water Summit will be covered here.
Yep, we will cover it.
And I will bring forward the library information.
All right. Jen, do you have anything for us, from the seat?
No, I don't.
Okay, with that, I'd entertain it in a, in a joint, folks. By Art, second?
Second.
All in favor of I?
I.
Close? During seven-fifty-two, everybody. Thank you very much.